Want to hold these over till next meeting?
That's up to you all. That's up to you all. That's why I don't have much in my report, because we always do.
All right. Good evening. I'll call the regular city council meeting of December 6, 2021, to order. This evening will be led in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Perkins. Councilman Perkins?
Thank you. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
Father, who art in heaven. Allo be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Perkins. Now I ask Clerk of Council Anne Forrest to please call the roll.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Boyle. Councilmember Gillig. Councilmember Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
President.
Councilmember Levert.
Here. Let the record show that four of the seven council members were present. Petitions?
There are no petitions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the regular meeting of November 15, 2021, in the committee of the whole meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions, any comments? Seeing none, without objection, the minutes will be approved unanimously as presented. We're now under committee reports. Does anybody from the finance committee have a report?
We just need to reschedule our meeting that was planned for tonight, but there's no report.
Okay. Long community planning, does anybody from Long Community Planning have a report?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations committee, anybody have a report?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilman Perkins?
Also no report.
Thank you. Streets, sidewalks, and sewers, Councilman Leopard?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic development and downtown planning, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Good.
Oh, yeah. No.
Go ahead.
No.
I dare you. All right. I will move on. Reports to the officers is Honored Mayor Aaron DiMonte.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned previously, I'm keeping these updates very short since this is our time to discuss the budget. I know some of you may have questions this evening, so I'm happy to do that in just a moment. We finally have Jake DiMonte here this evening, so we've tried to schedule his oath of office a couple of different times now, and I feel like at risk of you getting called to something else, we probably need to get you up here quickly and get this done, because I don't know how. Three times, I think, we've tried this. So, yes, we're excited for you, Jake. Jake was one of our finalists to become chief of police. He thoroughly impressed both myself and the city administrator, and I'm proud to see you being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. It's very exciting. Your family should be thrilled. I see them out there. So Jake, without further ado, we'll have you come up here in the center. And hope you have your speech ready.
You want to tell them, Jason?
Yeah. You've called me out, forgot tonight.
Yeah, that's all we need. Okay. Now, I do have to be careful since Jason wrote this to make sure he doesn't have any references to University of Michigan here. That's what we put all over his report for the department head meeting today. Yeah, I'm just afraid I'm going to be reading along, and you never know what you're going to come up with. I won't say anything. Well, make sure your family are all ready with the cameras. You got a good angle on him. He's the important one. Okay. All right. If you would please, sir, raise your right hand. And raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Jacob DiMonte.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
I promise to uphold and obey.
I promise to uphold and obey.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And the ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
I will faithfully and honorably.
I will faithfully and honorably.
Discharge the duties of the office of lieutenant.
Discharge the duties of the office of lieutenant.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you very much.
Someone here can request a opinion, as you might be going to come on up. Thank you. Thank you all. Dave, do you want to say anything?
Did either of you two want to say anything? Or if you do, Jake, you're welcome to. Now's your turn.
We have all the time to prepare.
All this time. I figured you canceled three times just because you wanted to make a great scene.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I wholeheartedly believe that we have one of the best police departments in the state of Ohio, and I know this from traveling, meeting different officers, training, instructing. And when I go away and I see what other cities and other agencies are dealing with, I know that we have something special here, and I'm just happy to be not only a part of it, but to, I believe, have some sway in some of that, too. So thank you very much to all of you, and then also Jason and Dave for having the faith in me to do that. And of course, couldn't do that without my family and my girlfriend supporting me as well. So thank you all.
Jake, on behalf of the city council, I want to congratulate you. You're a homegrown guy. It's been fun watching you grow up. You come from a great family. It's reassuring to know that our community produces people like you. You stuck around, and we've been the beneficiaries of that. So again, congratulations. Wish you nothing but success and good health and happiness, and the same to your wonderful family. So God's blessing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. With that, just very briefly, a quick financial update. As of last Friday, we're about 6.5% ahead of last year's numbers year-to-date, which is very positive news. That's approximately a $650,000 increase. We're continuing to watch things. The month of December, we're up against a very strong December last year. The nice part is we're within about $300,000 of revenue of where we were for all of last year, so things look very positive. Or just kind of to show you where we are in the timeline of things, like I said, we have about $300,000 to catch last year's total collections. The month of December, we usually average between $900,000 and just under $1 million, so we should be, we should come out of this year in a quite solid position of hopefully at least 6% if not more ahead of last year. And then, believe it or not, we're going to be into 2022 already. You all have your budgets in front of you. I did let our department heads know this morning at our department head meeting that it may be hard to believe already, but it's time for them to schedule their updates to council. Rob Chapel promised to be twice as long this coming year.
Good. Good.
Yeah, yeah. So the poor fire chief is never going to live that moment down of his whatever it was. You know, I think you could watch every season of Gilligan's Island and still not catch up with the three-hour tour that he gave us. Chief, if you're listening out there, which I know you're probably not, because he just texted me about the situation that they were dealing with, with a fire this afternoon. We do appreciate the job that Rob Chapel and all of our department heads do here in the city. They've done a tremendous job with the budget this year. They do a tremendous job day in and day out. But yes, so they'll be coming before you. I've said I don't want the first meeting in January to be taken up with those updates already, but by the second meeting in January, I would like to start having them. True to form, Matt Watson has already scheduled his, so he's going. The engineer's update will be the first meeting in March. He is the only one who has spoken yet for a date, so he will be providing that update March 1st. I'll keep you all updated and try to let you know at least a meeting in advance who's presenting the next time, so that you can have any questions or comments available for them. And really, the only other significant thing that I have to update you on is we are continuing to have internal discussions on ARPA dollars. We have identified, we believe, well over $1 million now that we'll be able to spend of our approximately $1.8 million allocation. We have no concerns that we will be able to figure out good uses for the community, and we think a couple of these uses are extremely exciting. However, we don't want to discuss them much publicly until we get clarification to be sure that they are indeed uses for ARPA funds, because one in particular, I think, will really excite a large portion of the community. It could be something really good for our Parks Department, but we don't want to talk too much on that until we're certain of it, because I think it's the type of thing that if we announced it and found out later we couldn't do, it's going to leave a lot of people, especially kids in the community, disappointed. We don't want to do that, especially at Christmas time. So we'll let you know as soon as we have confirmation with those ARPA dollars. But with that said, that will conclude what I have to formally share with you, my report this evening, as I promised, short, sweet, to the point. But I would open it up if there are any questions for the administration, whether they are in regards to the budget or whether they are just in regards to anything else that you have for us this evening.
Anyone have any questions? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have some questions on the 2022 budget, and I do have a question on Exhibit A of ordinance 105, but I'll bring that up when we come to that. And I know some people may think I was, I am micromanaging these numbers, but I'm not. It's just when I see a number and it doesn't make sense to me, it just doesn't sit well with me to vote on something and let it go by. So with that, I have a few questions, and one on page, and other these are on the, whatever, the expense side of the 150-page document here. But on page 5 of 73, under Fund 113, Director of Law, I'm asking, what is $196,000 for prosecution? I did get an answer to that before the meeting. At first, I thought this was prosecution from the Director of Law Department here in the city. So if somebody could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Director Law?
Yeah, I can explain. Several years ago, the city entered into a contract with the Seneca County Prosecutor's Office to provide the prosecution of municipal court cases, and that is required by charter. We used to have a separate budget, that there was a law director budget that handled the civil matters of the city, and then a city prosecutor's budget that handled the municipal court misdemeanor prosecution. That separate city prosecutor budget included, like the contract we have with the county, it includes all of the personnel expenses. So that's all compensation and benefits, everything related to having an employee, but these employees are now employees of the county. That includes compensation and benefits for one full-time attorney, one part-time attorney, and one full-time legal assistant. One of the values of the contract is that in addition to those three, we have a complete staff of other attorneys and other support staff that are available right there in the same office to help with vacations, sick time, the overall administration. So that includes, the bulk of that expense is for the personnel that prosecute cases in municipal court. It does also include the training of the personnel, the legal research that they need, the office equipment, office computers that they use, office supplies. So the full furnishing of the office, just as we did before, but we have now a contract with the county.
Okay, thank you. Item 2 on Fund 114, on page 6 of 73, talks about $10,000 for others for the new Director of Communications. I'm just asking what the others is.
Yeah, so that line will be used for any kind of contract services essentially they may have. So if they need to contract with someone for photography for the website, for maintenance of the website, for really anything that that individual would contract with, will be taken out of that line. We were unsure exactly how much they'll have to do that, so we wanted to at least have a placeholder there, so we didn't have to come back to you guys five, 10 times throughout the year and keep asking for more money. So that's a placeholder. It may be too high or too low, but we'll know better once he or she's in place for a year or so, with budget time next year, and be able to give you a much more accurate number.
On page 8 of 73, under Fund 121, Mayor's Account, $15,000 under Labor Relations. I'm not sure what labor relations are taking place in 2022.
So we actually, believe it or not, are negotiating with unions already next year. So it's the end of the three-year period, and that will at least be the start of negotiations, depending on where they end up. It could be enough, or it could not be enough. So we never know what the, if you looked at probably a 10- or 12-year history of labor negotiations, that number's all over the map, just depending on how quickly or how long things take to get settled. So that's what that is.
Okay, thank you. Don't want to leave anyone out. On page 9 of 73, Fund 122, City Administrator, asking, what is the $21,000 under other on that line item?
All of Dale's various other items that he contracts out with. So that other line is essentially, that's what it is, kind of like communications. It's something that any little service that he may contract for, that is not the normal contracts, like our cleaning contract, that's a separate line because it's so large. It's essentially all the little expenses that Dale has throughout the year within the city administrator's office of things that he manages.
Okay. On page 18 of 73, under Fund 220, Police, and I think I know what the answer is going to be, but we're budgeting $148,000 for overtime. Off the top of my head, sounds like a lot of dollars for a one-year period of time, and I just threw in, can't we add one more person to cover overtime for 365 days? I think that's not a good question, but it just sounds like a large number, 148K.
Yeah, I wish it was that easy. If it was, we'd just hire another officer and have no overtime. But there's a lot of things that are required. There are people, when they call in shifts, that they're sick, especially these last 18 months or so with COVID. We've had a lot of folks that have been out. There are a couple out now, and anytime that happens, it almost always leads to overtime, not to mention the various holidays that we have, folks taking vacation time. Unfortunately, it adds up.
Okay, thank you. On page 21 of 73, under Fund 230, Fire and Rescue, I think it's the same answer. Why are we budgeting $473,000 for overtime? That sounds like a high number, but all of a sudden, it doesn't sound too high. Page 24 of 73, under Fund 581, pre-commission, last year, the budget was $55,000. This year, it looks like it's roughly $43,000. Is that because they didn't spend the dollars last year, or?
Nope. Last year, there were some one-time expenses in there, like some of the items that we had other lines this year. There were some one-time expenses. I believe we purchased some planners last year that we're not anticipating to purchase this year as well. There was something else that was a one-time expense that came out of there, and I'm not recalling what it was, but that's why. So that's why we're showing that when we have one-time expenses, we do lower those lines back down. We don't always keep them up high.
Okay, thank you. Page 24 of 73, Fund 582, Charter Review, there's some, I think some dollars in there. I didn't put it in here, but I thought that won't show up for another 10 years.
I believe that's the election expense that we'll have to, is that correct? It's the election expense, because we have to pay the Board of Elections to have our amendments on the ballot?
We usually do not receive that bill until the 1st of the next year.
Correct myself here. I had page 61. It's page 62 of 73, Fund 353, Sever, Sewer Revenue. I think we touched on this last year. Looks like we're budgeting $27,000 for credit card fees. I know someone explained that six or eight months ago. Budgeting $20,000, I think last year it was more than $20,000. I just need to get a handle on this. Someone pays their credit card, let's say $100 every two months. They use their credit card. They paid their $100. Tiffin receives, sends it to the credit card company. We want $100 under Ken Jones. Okay. Who pays that 1% or 2% handling fee from the credit card? Is it us, the city? Or is it?
Is that an item that we pay, but then we charge the resident for?
It's actually the credit card processing company that we contract with. Right now, it's Elevon, and so we always have a monthly fee just based on, and it's usually based on the volume that we have. So there are other months where it's much higher. So with this new company that we're going to be working with, we're hoping that maybe some of those we might be able to drop down, but we're just not sure. So we left it the same this year to kind of see how things play out, and that might be something we can reduce in next year's budget.
And if we, city council, made a motion or whatever we need to do to discontinue that and just put a notice out that three months from now, six months from now, we're not accepting debit cards. And the reason I'm even suggesting that is, and I have it here somewhere, I saw my two-month bill here at 97 North Sandusky Street, and I recall, again, this number here from eight months ago. So I took delivery of calling different people. I called the Tiffin Income Tax Department. Do you charge a fee for using a debit card? Yes, we charge $3.50. Sewer revenue does not. I didn't tell them that. I called the Seneca County Real Estate Tax. Do you charge a fee for using credit cards? Well, yes, the answer is. How much? 3.75%. I'm thinking sewer revenue, city council does it. Called Foster Income Tax Department and say, who I'm representing myself, 2.75 right off the bat. Yes, we charge 2.75. Like, are you surprised? Not after I talked to two other people, no. I called Finley Income Tax. Do you charge for using a credit card? Well, yes. 3%. Oh, thank you. I called Fremont Income Tax. Do you charge for using a credit card? Well, haven't, didn't say, haven't you? Haven't had nothing to do with this. 2.75%. I called Clyde, Ohio. I'm getting tired of ringing things. Clyde said, well, just, I might have said, Mr. Jones, just next April, fill out your income tax. Go to this third-party website. Once the calculation's done, they'll chart, tell you how much you charge. So my point is, one, two, buck of my shoe, four, five, six other communities are charging, and we're not. So I'm thinking it's time for us to move into 2022 and save us $20,000, and maybe $20,000 in 2023, and maybe $20,000 in 2024. I don't think that's, maybe we need a special meeting to kick that around.
Councilman Perkins?
Over the years, I've noticed that most government entities, state, and not so much local in Tiffin, but a lot of state and federal, when you do go and pay something, there is a charge, no different than a BMV. You know, you go in there and they charge you a dollar, a dollar fifty, or whatever. But most regular business style, they try to build that into, you know, their business, where they're actually eating the fee, and you don't see that fee. So I mean, I guess it's whatever approach we would want to take for that. We can continue doing what we do, and rates go up eventually, or we add an additional fee on. I mean, that's really the only two choices, but you can't get rid of debit cards. I think that's outrageous. People aren't ever going to pay their bills.
Finance Director?
That is something that will be changing with the new company. We will be charging.
Okay, so it's going to happen.
Yeah. The flat fee?
Yeah.
their business where they're actually eating the fee, and you don't see that fee. So I mean, I guess it's whatever approach we would want to take for that. We can continue doing what we do, and rates go up eventually, or we add an additional fee on. I mean, it's really the only two choices, but you can't get rid of debit cards. I think that's outrageous. People aren't ever going to pay their bills.
Finance Director.
That is something that we'll be changing with the new company. We will be charging.
Okay, so it's going to happen?
Yeah.
The flat fee?
Yeah, there's already a fee structure.
Percentage? Perfect.
Do you recall what the fee is, Kathy, off the top of your head? 2.75. So there you go, Ken. Already solved your problem for you.
Okay.
You could have asked us. You wouldn't have had to make all those calls.
Okay. Thank you.
We're just keeping you busy.
Is it it?
It's it. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, budget or unrelated? Gosh, I'm going to have to start making a longer report if no one else other than Ken's going to have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Clerk or Councilman, for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report that 60 days have passed since the county commissioners delivered a packet of documents to my office for the petition by DAMSA and another petition from Dunkin' Donuts for properties to be annexed. And we can now proceed to introduce the legislation for those properties. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Law Director.
Yeah, I want to ask Council, is that Council's wish? Do I have direction to prepare the ordinance for the next meeting to accept the annexation?
Yes.
Thank you, I will.
See the heads going yes?
Yes. Including Councilman Jones.
Anything else?
No, that concludes my report.
All right. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for November 2021. Total receipts for the month were $4,091,280.47. Total expenses for the month were $4,763,941.82. General fund unencumbered balance is $4,273,12.72. Income tax receipts for November 2021 were $919,563.8. The total annual increase between November 2020 and November 2021 was $54,618.47. Year-to-date income tax receipts at the end of November were up 6.68%. A portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for public streets for November was $112,548.6, the unexpendable balance for all funds is $31,861,468.63, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I would like to make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report and her bank reconciliation.
We have a motion to accept the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation as her second. Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But the record shows that it was unanimous. Thank you. Director of Law, Brent Howard.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items. The city received certificates of the results of the election involving the charter amendments. As you know, all of the charter amendments were approved by the voters in November, which means that they are now a part of your charter, which, for you, you need to understand that some of them directly involve some of your business. For example, going forward, the number of council members to approve a suspension is no longer three-fourths of council, it's now two-thirds. So that means five instead of six. The notice for a special council meeting can be delivered to you through a fax. I'm sorry, through your email of your... Yeah, people say, where do I have a fax?
Oh, no.
What's a fax? Yeah, what is a fax? I think I have a dusty machine off in the side. No, it can be sent by, to your email, to your city email address. So keep in mind that there, all of those amendments are in place. If you have any questions about any of them, if you want a refresher, you can get ahold of me, and I can give you a complete list again. But they are a part of the charter. I have corresponded with Walter Drain by email, not fax. And we're working on the language to make sure that it is correct so that it will be part of the next recodification that you receive. The clerk is working on getting the ordinances that you've passed recently as part of that. And then that'll also be a part of what is online, so anyone from the public can review and read the new charter. Any questions about the charter amendments?
Councilperson Jones.
Thank you, Council President. I know we passed an ordinance to accept these 11 before the voters, but in my mind, I thought this was going to take place January 1st. What's the difference between New Year and December here?
The, what you approved is you approved placing them on the ballot.
Okay.
That's what you did. You asked the voters to consider these. Once they are approved, they are law. They're not like a term. You have a term that by charter commends a particular date. These charter amendments are approved as soon as the voters approve them.
Okay, there you go.
Any other questions about the charter amendments? I have one other item regarding Ordinance 21-111. That's the ordinance that is ready for second reading this evening. It is for the confirmation of that the agreement with Tiffin Riverfront Development is null and void. I was going to ask you to suspend the third reading and approve that this evening, in large part because I've had some communication with Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC's attorney. He's informed me that the developer is still interested in development in downtown Tiffin. Will be probably in contact with the city regarding his interest, in particular, the multifamily development that's on private property. But as for the city contract, he has, they've accepted and understand the city's position, and are not challenging it. Regardless even of that position, I still would have asked you to suspend the third reading and approve it this evening. But I wanted to give you that information because I think we were all kind of wondering what sort of response the developer would give us. And they've been very cordial in the contact we've had. And I think this is something, though, that you should do at your next meeting. I don't know of any reason other than the reasons that I gave you before that you should confirm that the agreement is null and void, and it was null and void November 1st. Any questions regarding that ordinance? Seeing none, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director of Law. We are now under written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several appointments to the boards and commissions. I'm going to read them all at once and then proceed with the others. The Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 21-38, Appointment to the Municipal Arts Commission of Shannon Bowman. Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 21-39, Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Skylar Meddert. Request for Legislation Number 21-40, for Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Matthew Kennedy. Request for Legislation Number 21-41, Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Nick Consolo. Request for Legislation Number 21-42, Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Jamie Thaddeus. Request for Legislation Number 21-43, Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Chelsea Bickelhoff. Request for Legislation Number 21-44, Appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Orion Pangian. Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 21-45, Reappointment to Park and Recreation Board of John Bing. And then Request for Legislation Number 21-46, Reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Dennis Everly.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 21-38 through 21-46 will be forwarded to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And then we have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 21-47 for the City of Tiffin's new jobs program.
Mayor's Request for Legislation 21-47 will be forwarded to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee. And there's a request that we get that moving as quickly as possible. Thank you.
And then we have a letter from the Planning Commission regarding Ordinances 21-98 and Ordinance Number 21-102. And they met and voted unanimously to recommend that City Council approve both ordinances.
Planning Commission's Letter of Recommendations for Ordinances 21-98 and 21-102 will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And then there were two amended Exhibit As that were just added to the packet of the council's information.
Yeah, thank you.
That concludes written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone from the attending public who wishes to address council can do so by stepping up to the podium, signing in, stating your name, addressing your comments to the President and Council.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Nick Dutrow. I'm with Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership. I just wanted to come in and make some comments very quickly in concern to the new jobs program. Happy to join the committee if they are able to meet sometime in the next couple of weeks. We have a new potential manufacturer coming to our community. They are looking to hire very shortly. You know, I don't like to give you a short timeline when I can help it, but unfortunately, just the way that things worked, hoping that we can potentially get that passed at the December 20th meeting to help them as they look to hire new people here for the beginning of the new year. This company is looking to locate in a really exciting location, maybe renting out or leasing a portion of the former American Standard facility. So knowing they're coming to that storied facility, bringing a number of new jobs here, we're very excited to be talking about this and hopefully helping them locate here.
Does anyone have any questions for Nick? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Since timing is of the essence, and I'm going to have a timing issue.
Yeah.
Can we do Monday night next week? That'll be my last available for a while.
Yeah.
Would that work? What time works for you, Nick?
You can...
Whenever works best for council.
Like 6:00?
I can definitely do 6:00.
Where would you like to meet?
I'm happy to meet here.
Is that okay, Steve?
Yeah, 6:00 PM, next Monday, 13th.
Thank you so much, council.
Always glad to help. Keep up the good work. These are the kind of things you like to hear. All right, anyone else? All right, we're now under motions. Councilperson Perkins.
I have a question here. Can I include these new requests for legislations also?
No, no, because the charter says that the appointments are announced at one regular meeting, the following regular meeting they're voted on.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion for the Mayor's Request for Legislation 21-17 through 21-28[1395.46] to be read and voted on as a whole.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to read Resolutions 21-17 through 21-24.
Is it 24 or 28?
28.
Excuse me, 28. And vote on them one time. Any discussion? A motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that ordinance number 21-102 be removed from the table for its third reading.
We have a motion that.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading, I'm sorry.
We have a motion that ordinance 21-102 be removed from the table. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that we remove ordinance 21-98 off the table so it is available for the second reading.
We have a motion to remove ordinance 21-98 from the table. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like the second motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask to table ordinance number 21-104 to allow for a sufficient number of Council members at the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table ordinance 21-104 until our next meeting. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like the second motion, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The motion passes.
Should I do the amendments now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that we amend ordinance number 21-105 and ordinance 21-106 to include the amended Exhibit A.
If I could suggest that they should take separate motions, separate votes, please.
Okay.
So clarifying that to 21-105.
Okay. Amended with Exhibit A.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to amend ordinance 21-105 with Exhibit A. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like the second, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask Council to amend ordinance number 21-106 to include Exhibit A.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend ordinance 21-106 with Exhibit A, the pay schedule included in Exhibit A. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
That's ordinance 21-110. You just said 106.
You're right, I did. That's the way I wrote it down, too.
That's what I wrote down, because you told me that.
I did, too. So it's 21-110?
Yeah, that's the pay ordinance.
Okay.
Should I redo?
So we're amending 21-110.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Just let the record reflect that that's the proper ordinance number.
All right. Everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
All right. Is there any questions, any comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passes. Anything else? All right, we're now under resolutions.
Bear with me.
It's a big one.
That's all right.
Can I sit back?
Yeah.
Do a quick show.
Resolution number 21-17, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Mark Simone to serve a three-year term on the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee, ADA, from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2024. Resolution number 21-18, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Ed Lake to serve a three-year term on the Fair Housing Board from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2024. Resolution number 21-19, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Wayne Wax to serve a two-year term on the Investment Advisory Committee from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2023. Resolution number 21-20, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Brian Ferguson to serve a five-year term on the Tree Commission from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2026. Resolution number 21-21, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Robert Mack Jr. to serve a five-year term on the Tax Incentive Review Council from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2026. Resolution number 21-22, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Robert Mack Jr. to serve a four-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution number 21-23, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's appointment of Robert Williams to serve a four-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution number 21-24, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Randy Weiser to serve a four-year term on the Tiffin Recreation and Beautification Endowment Fund Board from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution number 21-25, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Greg Dell to serve a four-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution number 21-26, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Bryce Riggs to serve a four-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2025. Resolution number 21-27, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of James Boroff to serve a two-year term on the Local Board of Tax Review from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2023. Resolution number 21-28, introduced by Zach Perkins. Resolution approving Mayor's reappointment of Brooke Edwards to serve a three-year term on the Architectural Board of Review from January 1st, 2022 until December 31st, 2024.
This is the first reading of resolutions 21-17 through 21-28. Councilman Perkins.
Give me.
Motion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion. How am I motioning these?
To approve resolutions.
All of them as a whole.
We've already approved it.
I didn't know if I could or not.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 21-17 through 21-20, 21-28.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to approve resolutions 21-17 through 21-28. Are there any comments or discussion? Mayor.
I just want to thank all these individuals for serving on our boards and commissions because every year it gets more and more difficult to find volunteers to serve on our various boards and commissions for the city. And this year is no exception. We've got several of them that are open. In fact, I have one board that within the last just couple of months, I had one person move out of the city that was on it, so they're no longer on it, and two other individuals who are stepping down from it. So I've got a zero-person board at the end of this year. So it's just one of the issues that we face more and more as people's lives become busier. So I thank all these individuals and everyone else who serves on our boards and commissions because they're an integral part of city government.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like your commission, Arts Commission, is full.
Yeah, there was a lot of interest. There were, I can't remember the exact number, I'm going to say in the neighborhood of 40 different submissions of people who had interests with tons of different backgrounds. Some of the sad parts were that there were some folks who submitted who, of course, did not live in the city, and it indicates that in order to serve on one of the boards and commissions, you must be an elector of the city. So there were some that we automatically had to throw out even though they were tremendous candidates if they would have lived in the city. However, all of those individuals will be invited to the opening planning meeting when the commission meets for the first time in January in hopes that they serve on subcommittees and help volunteer because there's nothing that prohibits them from serving on subcommittees and volunteering to help the Arts Commission. They just cannot be one of the seven voting members. So it was quite tough. We had a ton of very good applicants, and it took quite some time to sift through them, longer than I anticipated, actually, because of how many good folks that we had. And they were really from all aspects, the performing arts, visual arts, music art, just every kind of art was represented. And that was what was difficult because I didn't want to have seven commission members who were all artists that were either painters or sketch, you know, did sketching, but I also didn't want to have all seven be performing arts. So it was very difficult to figure out the best fit to try to get all different genres and types of art represented without turning anyone away either. But at the end of the day, when you have 40-plus applicants and seven spots, you just have to do that.
Maybe you can interest them in your other openings.
That very well could be a possibility.
Get their feet wet.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the Clerk to call the vote on the motion, resolutions 21-17 through 21-28.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Resolutions 21-17 through 21-28 pass with a vote of 4 to 0.
Ordinance number 21-98, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance zoning approximately 0.357 acres of land owned by Damsel Limited in the Third Ward of the city as Zone C2 General Commercial District compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-98.
Ordinance number 21-1, I'm sorry, that is amended. No, that's not amended, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 21-102, introduced by Zach Perkins. I'm sorry, Bridget Boyle. Confuses the signatures sometimes. Sorry. Ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Tiffin to change the zoning classification of seven parcels of land on Adam Street, North Monroe Street, and Frost Parkway owned by Monument LLC and ERF Partners LLC in the Second Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-102.
Ordinance number 21-104, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept permanent easements from Store Master Funding 14 LLC for sanitary sewer purposes along Mall Road, County Road 11.
We table.
Yeah, I was going to say. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. There's so many coming in. Okay. I stand corrected. Let's get that one out of here. Okay, moving on with ordinance number 21-105, introduced by Ben Gillig. Annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from, wait a minute, this is amended as well.
It's amended, yeah.
Yeah, amended ordinance 21-105. Annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the City of Tiffin for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022 and ending December 31st, 2022.
This is the second reading of amended ordinance 21-105.
Ordinance number 21-106, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-106.
Ordinance number 21-107. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 552 Sewer Revenue Fund to the 557 Combined Sewer Separation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-107.
Ordinance number 21-108, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds and payment of bond and loan principal and interest and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-108.
Ordinance number 21-109, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance authorizing the return of the balance of the 2012 to 2021 Fire Vehicle Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund, authorizing the creation of 330, 2022 to 2031 Fire Vehicle Fund and amending the budget ordinance.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-109.
Amended ordinance 21-110, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 20-134, the city pay ordinance, to comply with the State of Ohio Minimum Wage Law to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of amended ordinance 21-110.
Ordinance number 21-111, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance confirming that the real estate purchase agreement between the City of Tiffin, Ohio and Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC is null and void and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-111.
Ordinance number 21-112, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance accepting the dedication of a street named Eagle Rock Drive and portions of Mall Road and Tiber Road located in the Second Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-112.
Ordinance number 21-113, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement from R&amp;L Zeiss Family Partnership III Limited for sanitary sewer purposes running from Euclid Avenue in the Third Ward of the city and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-113.
Ordinance number 21-114, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance enacting Section 134.16 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, establishing a returned check fee.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-114.
Ordinance number 21-115, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance amending Section 1129.04 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, increasing the city engineer's fee for reviewing and processing subdivision plats.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-115.
Ordinance number 21-116, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance enacting Chapter 936, Small Cell Facilities in the Right-of-Way of Tiffin Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-116.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under other business. Anyone have anything? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce that the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee is having a meeting December 13th at 6:00 p.m. here in the Chamber offices to discuss Mayor's request for legislation 21-47, City of Tiffin's new jobs program, and any other business that may come before the committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Present vote. I'd like to go back to three of these ordinances. Or all four, or four of them. And I know we had the first reading on them, and I guess there's, I just don't want to wait till the third reading and discuss these and, oh, you're a little late in bringing it up. On 21-105, that's that Exhibit A, and I made some notes here, and if I can follow my notes. And again, before we, or I vote on this on the third reading, if you just go down, again, I'm not picking on the mayor, but just the first one I saw on page two of this Exhibit A, I think we all got it. City Council Budget Attachment 2021. Anyways, three items changed. The personal services wages went down, the personal services benefits went up, professional services went up for increasing that Fund 121. In general terms, what does this involve, or why the changes since two weeks ago?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we finally got the official date of retirement for Judy, my assistant, and those numbers had to be changed because beforehand we were just estimating. Now we have the actual final date in place, so now all of the payouts as far as vacation and retirement, et cetera, all are finalized in hard numbers, so we had to update those.
Okay, thank you. That was an easy one. Page three, Fund 193, City Engineer. Wages went up, benefits went up, other services and expenses went up, supplies and materials went up on the city engineer. How is this different than two weeks ago?
Yes, so with all of the projects coming up, the city engineers are bringing back the engineer tech one position. That was one that has been vacant for several years, but because of the amount of work that we have coming up, starting with the Ellis Street Bridge and all of our sewer projects, as you probably recall, the long-term control plan, we have over $80 million to spend on sewer programs because of the EPA mandates. We've determined that that position must be filled in order for the engineer's office to continue with their workload. So that, it is a 50-50 split, half of it sewer-funded because they're going to be out there working on a lot of our long-term control plan sewer projects, and the other half is general fund because they will be doing things such as street work, bridge work, et cetera.
Okay, then, takes care of page 12, I was going to ask. I'm sure that satisfies myself anyways. And, and page 16 to 17, the whole entire thing went up 136,000, but you explained all that. Okay, thank you. That was 105. 110, 110 was what? Many city pay ordinance, and I have that somewhere last year's. I was going to bring it up last year, and I didn't, or maybe I touched on it. Anyways, Exhibit A on 20-21-110. I was going to ask, since we cleaned this up, for lack of better terms, we took off the mayor assistants and added communication director, understand that. But then some of these, and I, I'm just curious, wouldn't now be a good time to clean some of this up? Because do we have a finance tech two and a finance tech one? An assistant director of finance? Do we have those currently?
The only one we don't currently have is the assistant finance director.
Okay, new news to me, that's good. Then let's move on to assistant director of law. Do we don't have one of those currently, and do we need one for the near future?
They're under contract, so we don't have employees to fill those positions. We could, it's a one-year contract, so it's reevaluated every year. It doesn't hurt to have that.
Okay.
You would know because you would have to appropriate the funds to fill that position. So I don't think as a placeholder, in the event that we would ever need to fill that position, I think it's good to keep it.
Okay. Now, I think the mayor just touched on associate engineer. We.
Yes.
I think that was the title. Okay. Engineering tech one, tech one, surveyor, engineering aide. Those needed or necessary?
Yeah, so it depends on their level of education, where they slot into that, whether they're a tech one, a tech one with surveyor, or a, can you say the other name again? I'm trying to recall all the titles. What was the other title that you stated? It was tech one, tech one with surveyor, and there was some.
Engineering aide.
Yeah, so it depends on their level of education when they're hired in as far as which position. So this person that we're looking for now, we're just seeking a tech one, but if that person would have their surveyor's license, then they'd be slid into a tech one with surveyor position. But those are, that's why they're differentiated because they're different pay rates. Obviously, you pay somebody with a surveyor's license more than you just pay someone who's an engineer tech without a surveyor's license. So that's why I would propose we keep the positions because you never quite know who's going to apply and who you'll be hiring for those.
Humane officer, haven't seen he or she for several years.
Haven't had one in a while, but I would propose at least giving the new chief a year or so in place to make sure that he wants to not have that position filled. I'd like his feedback first before you'd eliminate it.
Same thing on animal control.
Yeah.
Parking office.
Really the same thing with those two positions.
And police department, there's a secretary three, secretary two, secretary one. Police chief's not here to answer that.
Yeah, I'd have to do some research.
It's not hurting anything.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like the law director stated, if you ever are going to fill those positions, you'll know about it because you'll have to appropriate funding for them.
Well, maybe I can stump someone on 112, because that one, 112 was something. 112 was, oh, street name, and Tiber Road. Where is this? I got it right here. Eagle Rock Drive.
The new road extension for the industrial park, Eagle Rock, where the new spec building is going in, they'll have to build a drive, a service drive, and that will be the name of that road that may one day be expanded or may always remain just a very small drive in between, Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, it's in between Grammar and this new property. So Toledo Mold &amp; Die, which is now Grammar, just south of that, but before you get to where the new spec building's being built. So that is the name of that street.
And then 21-116, read that, I guess, yesterday, first time. I said to myself, self, what is a small cell facility? I had no idea. Councilman Leopard touched on it, Director of Law touched on it. We're not talking a 30-foot post, or we just talk.
Oh, you're talking 40-foot posts.
Talking a little six-by-six, like a solar panel or dish?
Yeah, the best thing I'd tell you to do is when you Yeah, the best thing I'd tell you to do is, is when you get home tonight or tomorrow morning, actually Google 5G small cell tower. That's what I did to see what they look like, and there's all sorts of examples on there. They can be up to 40-foot tall poles, and all of the major cellphone carriers are interested in putting them in now because this is the way apparently they're going to bring this 5G high-speed internet that actually some areas of Tiffin already have, many areas do not, but that this is their preferred method of getting areas in the community that may be harder to reach by traditional towers. We've got our first few applications that have come forward, and we're looking to have some sort of legislation in place that, as the law director stated, we'd like to expand upon because the concern is that they're going to start cluttering things up. And it may look totally fine out in the middle of the industrial park, but it's obviously not going to look good in the middle of a residential neighborhood or in the downtown if there are a lot of them. And there is no law that requires them to share towers, which is disappointing because they clearly can share towers. But obviously, when it's your competition, many of them do not want to share. So we need to get some legislation in place to obviously encourage the growth of high-speed internet access for folks, but at the same time, we need to encourage that growth in a sustainable, efficient way that is not cluttering up neighborhoods and looking terrible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Perkins.
Will those new towers make the, the towers we currently have obsolete, the 4G towers?
Not to my understanding. I think they're equipping a lot of the 4G towers with 5G technology, but the problem is you get a lot of still dead spots in the 4G towers. You go inside even like Walmart, for example, and can struggle, and that's why they want to put a lot of these smaller towers around because it basically, it's like, almost like fiber over top of one another and getting better. So, no, not fiber optics, I'm talking about like, like fiber, fiber weaving would be. So you got your towers going one way, the small towers another way, and it's essentially covering those gaps that are not hit with traditional 4G towers right now.
Okay.
So that's why they want to put them, that's why a couple of these are right by downtown because there are many areas within the downtown, especially inside the buildings, that cellphone access is almost like being in a cave.
Or RE/MAX.
Yeah, well, you're in the center of Laird, yeah, Laird Arcade, for example, the Laird Building, and it's very difficult to get service unless you're on Wi-Fi in that building. And in theory, these towers are going to assist with, with that.
Okay.
We should have cell farms.
Franchising.
Anyone else? City administrator.
Just an informational item for councils' awareness for those members who were reelected to council. Councilman Perkins, Councilman Gillig, their surety bonds have been renewed for another four-year period. They do not have to make new applications. They'll be happy to hear they don't have to fill out that paperwork. Councilman Rhodes, who was elected or to be Councilman Rhodes, will have to fill out such an application and apply for the surety bond, which the city pays for. The First Ward will be vacant. Whoever is appointed to that position will then have a surety bond applied for. And present vote, your surety bond is being canceled as of 12/31/20.
Some of bad risk now.
Yeah. And Councilwoman Boyle's surety bond has been amended to reflect her new status as of January 1st. The other council members already have existing surety bonds that exist until the end of their terms.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. On the same subject, I think Clerk Council Ken pointed out to me, there's some paperwork on the desk there, I flipped through it, that's for new elected council people.
Trying to recall, can you refresh my memory? What is it there, is it the election update that came out?
No, it's something about finances.
Oh, yes, so that's.
If you received money, if you spent, how much you received, how much.
Anyone that ran for an office this past fall, that was the notice the Board of Elections sent. So if you were on the ballot this fall, your deadline's coming up. Do you recall the date, Ken?
No, I don't.
It's coming up within the next week, so.
Just if you were to.
Yeah. So I guess, yeah, yeah, so it just needs to be filed before you, you're on the naughty list for the Board of Elections.
Anything else, Council?
One more thing.
All right, may it fast.
Does anyone want to stay after the meeting and help me collect all these papers I got laid out here?
Sure, Kim Lee.
Yes, you can.
Anything else? Anything for the good of the order? All right. Well, seeing none, God bless our community and God bless all of you. Good night. We adjourn.